The Purple Carrot Bread Company. The Richard K. and Nancy L. Donahue Charitable Foundation.
I just wanted to tell you. Yeah, I'll hopefully get that back to you tomorrow.
Call the meeting to order. We'll start with the prayer. Please rise. Today as this session opens, we pray for your presence be before us for everyone who serves in the decision-making policy of our city. We pray for the direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. We may continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom, the decision-maker, which, excuse me, I can hear the background, so it confuses you, which will be good for the city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform the city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the love for which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all." Roll call. Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Samaras.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
That's nine present. Thank you. Before we do the city clerk approval moments, I just want to ask, the chief is here and Deputy Superintendent Golden to come up to the microphone for a second. You don't have to speak, but.
Even better.
Even better. So I just wanted to make sure publicly that we said thank you and Dan LaRocque couldn't be here tonight, but you know, your office, your department with Deputy Superintendent Golda and Dan LaRocque and the city manager's office with Karen Mullin, what a spectacular job you guys did this weekend for the funeral for Officer Katie Thine. And we couldn't have been more proud, you know, to host that. And the job that everybody did was unbelievable. So we just want to say thank you very much for that. Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, just briefly, I just wanted to reiterate some of your comments, starting with your closing statement that couldn't have been more proud of the city attending that funeral. Just the magnitude of the presence of police across this country for people at home who didn't know. They processed in front of us and I can't, from, you know, across the country. And it was, it was a very proud moment for the city. Chief, you and the deputy and the men and women of Lowell Police Department did just a magnificent job and made us proud in light of the fact that it was, it was a horrible tragedy. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, and all those who worked to make, to put this together.
Sure. Thank you, Chief.
If I could just add real quick, in a nutshell, obviously, the two deputies did a tremendous job here. There was many lieutenants in the background that also made sure that everything happened the way it was supposed to. When I did have to speak to the officers inside the auditorium, there's a private conversation with probably three or 400 officers that were in that auditorium. And when I spoke to them, basically what this came down to for Lowell PD was that we could not be there that night for Katie to change the circumstances of what happened or the outcome, but at the very least, we need to be there Friday for the wake, Saturday for the funeral, make sure that she deserved and got the burial that she so rightfully deserved. And my hat goes off to the men and women in this organization. I asked that they take care of this, and that was about my involvement, and they just took the ball from there and ran. And I don't really deserve a lot of the credit here, but obviously Deputy Golden, Deputy LaRocque, Lieutenant Fay, Lieutenant Gendreau, John Noon, who took care of the family, it went very well. And hopefully, we never have to practice on our own people, but it was a good drill for us to try to get this right. And I think we owe it to Katie, but I appreciate the recognition.
No, it was unbelievable. And I, and I could hear the comments from the family. I mean, they couldn't have been any more grateful for the send-off, and it was remarkable. Thank you.
Yeah.
For everything you did. Thank you. Need a motion to accept and place on file the meeting minutes from January 28th by Counselor Drinkwater, second by Counselor Conway. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules to make a motion to take 5.15 out of order.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Counselor Conway, second by Counselor Noon. 5.15.
5.15.
Yep. Vote to accept gift to Light Aiken Street Bridge. Waive the full reading, second reading by title.
Lot of votes tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Conway, Massachusetts, City of Lowell, City Council vote authorizing city manager on behalf of the city of Lowell to accept the gift from anonymous donor to light up the Aiken Street Bridge and the Greater Lowell Community Foundation through its generosity of anonymous donor wishes to be, wishes to present this lighting project of the Aiken Street Bridge as a gift to the city.
Motion to adopt.
Yeah, motion to adopt by Counselor Rourke, second by Counselor Mercia.
This is presentation to Joe.
And there's a presentation and another speaker?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the council for voting to put us up front. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you to the city manager, and thank you for all the guests that are here. I am very pleased here tonight, to be here tonight, to present to the city a gift. And as I go through that, I think it'd be important a little bit to also focus on a little bit of some of what we may have done in the past. And I've got a little bit of a slideshow up in front of you, and that is the Olet Bridge, which the donor, the anonymous donor would, would like to gift to the city. But I think, as folks know, it was back in May of 2018, we lit up the Cox Bridge, the Bridge Street Bridge. And that was such a success that it motivated this, the Olet Bridge, to come forward, to be lit up. For those of you that are aware of that, and I suspect many of you are, not only did that create an iconic image in the city of Lowell, it also, which, which was the wish of the donor, connected the downtown with Centerville. The foot traffic that increased on the bridge became exponential. The business on the Centerville side increased. The traffic in the Karawak Park increased. Just the lighting in the urban, in the approval, this urban approval created a better environment and a better safety for all residents, and it was a, it was a great project for the city. And the Greater Lowell Community Foundation is extremely proud to be a part of that. That's what the bridge looked like before we lit it up. A little bit different, a little bit different walking over that bridge. That's what it looks like today. In, in a context which I think is important is the waterways, the Lowell Waterways Vitality Initiative Action Plan is a project that started several years back, and the Greater Lowell Community Foundation is a, is a key part of that. And not only was the Cox Bridge a key part of that, but also is the Olet Bridge. And just to speak a little bit on that, I'd like to invite Fred Faust to the, to the podium to assist a little in that. Fred has been a key colleague in all of this, and there's lots of pieces that are going on in the city that you may well be aware of that are part of this action plan, so.
Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's always great to come home to the city council because of the unanimity of support that we've received, and it's really, really appreciated. This is really a project that's had a lot of partners and tremendous support. We haven't met one person yet who's been against it or thinks there's anything negative about it. So this is taking another step. And the great thing about Lowell is Lowell wouldn't be here without a plan. We've had a series of great plans, and as you'll see as we just talk about the plan that was first initiated here in 2016, all the kinds of things we've been talking about have manifested themselves, and it's been very rewarding to be involved. And acquiring partners such as Greater Lowell Community Foundation, National Park Service, and especially the city of Lowell is just, is, is great. It's been a great achievement, and we've got a lot done together. So thank you for that. Next slide, Jay. By the way, this is in 2016 when this plan was done. It was, has received since two awards, a regional and national award, and we're appreciative of that as well, and all of your support. And it was appropriate that that picture included the Lower Locks because through the actions of the former mayor and the city manager and our present state senator, there was a meeting convened that is going to sort of map the future of the Lower Locks, which is one of the most important and beautiful resources that we have in, in the city of Lowell. And Senator Kennedy came through with an earmark in the last session of legislature, and a government, the governor has signed an appropriation for $200,000, which will get us started. This is a multimillion dollar project to restore that, but we've got a lot of partners, and we've got great will to succeed. So again, thank you very much. The good thing about the waterways is it impacts everyone. It impacts every ethnic group. It impacts everybody in the city. It impacts everyone who uses the downtown. And it's a story really about people and how people function and have functioned and their history. It's not some, you know, not some president's house. It's not some great industrialist. It's a story about people who have occupied and worked hard and made Lowell what it is. So the interesting thing is these five nodes that we picked out as part of the study, all of these things are happening. So if you, you look at each of these, Ecumenical Plaza has hosted Points of Light for the last three years. Lucy Larkham just recently, under the auspices of work of our former project manager, Chris Hayes, who we have unhappily contributed back to the city of Lowell. There was a Lowell High School Arts Event, and obviously, the Lower Locks has been lit, I'm sorry, the Lucy Larkham has been lit. The Cox and Willett Bridges, which Jay has referred to, the Lower Locks that we're working together on, and Hamilton Canal, which Senator Kennedy has signaled he would like to see some permanent lighting that would complement the efforts of the city in private development in that area, and we're committed to doing that. So again, we have amazing water resources that really rival any area of the country or in fact, the world. And we're out to get them to be accessible, get people to enjoy them, and just make them super amenities for the city of Lowell. This really started out as a lighting project, and we've had some successes on that front as well. These are two projects you're familiar with, and these were initiated by, again, private owners, Eastern Salt and the Lighting of the Firehouse Tower, and they are going to expand that lighting this year to the remainder of the building. And then the Old City Hall Enterprise Bank. We have two additional lighting grants that have been awarded. One is to Cobblestones Restaurant that's been working with us on the lighting program. And again, that's very appropriate because it's in the Merrimack Canal Lighting District, and again, complements what the city initiated. And what we're going to be pleased to be announcing, a technical matching grant to the Hellenic Church, to the Holy Trinity Church, that will be matched by, by the church. And we have another anonymous donation, which is not the anonymous donation you think about, but a separate anonymous donor who is committed to lighting St. Patrick's. So our goal here in the next two years, so this would be potentially two Points of Lights events from now, would be to permanently light St. Patrick's and Holy Trinity. And those are, again, remarkable and beautiful assets that the city of Lowell has. So it's been a lot of fun, and it's been rewarding to be involved with this, especially with all the partnerships. Jay and I, I think, talk every day, maybe a couple times a day to forward these programs. So I salute Jay and the foundation as well. And again, thank you to everybody for all of your efforts.
Thank you, Fred. So the Olet Bridge. So when we started this project, and very similarly as when we started the last project, it was all about how do we engage the folks that are going to be impacted by this? And I think it's important for the council to know that on the 7th of January, we met with the folks at Renaissance condo, and we went over and did a presentation similar to this, but actually, a little longer. And we also brought along the architect, and we had a wonderful discussion there. And there's a gentleman here that hopefully has the ability to come after me to speak to that. So if you can indulge me with that when I get finished through this. Also, I sent the letter that's in your packet to the manager. I've met with the DPW and I've met with the DPD. We've gone over the project plans, and we've gone over the traffic plan. And I think what's important for everybody out there that's listening, and of course, it's extremely important for the folks in this room too, this entire project is, does not cost one penny from the city, does not cost taxpayers one penny. This is 100% donor funded. And so I'm thrilled to be here. I'm thrilled that we've got the opportunity to light this bridge, and this is an amazing bridge. It's funny, when we started the bridge, we figured, okay, we did the Cox Bridge, this one's going to be easier. The Olet Bridge is a third longer than the Cox Bridge, so that created a few other complications. It's very interesting, and I'm sure everybody will be intrigued to know that this is the longest lenticular bridge surviving in the United States, and lenticular is the archway. And so the architect that we have that does this particular project also happens to head the Architect's School at Northeastern, and they talk about this bridge. This bridge is in the textbooks. It is a very interesting bridge, and it's, and the thing that's very interesting about this bridge is you contrast it with the Cox Bridge. If you look at the Cox Bridge, it's like a muscle man. It's a really rugged, sturdy bridge. This is not. This is the opposite of that. This is a delicate bridge. These are fine pieces that have been woven together. And what we're looking to do on this bridge, different than the other bridge, is the color of the lighting. But these are some very old pictures, and this is what the bridge looks like right now. And we flipped through these, I don't want to take up so much of your time, but you can see how the lights, and the thing that's important with the lights here, the lights for the Cox Bridge were mounted up above, and they shine down. The lights here are going to be mounted down below, and they're going to shine up, and they will have patterns similar to that, and they will have the ability to be programmed. And we'll be working with a variety of different players to do all this, National Grid being one of them, and of course, our team. And it will light things up like this, in a really interesting way, and that's the sense of, the reason the lighting is going to go up. You can get the sense as to the nuances of how this light just washes the different sides of the bridge. And I think that's a great picture as to how this could look. And I think one of the things that's interesting, and it was true for the Cox Bridge as it is here, is the team that we have for this particular project. The architect is Landing Studios, and he's the only individual that's not from Lowell, but he wants to be from Lowell. He's from Summerfield. He's a great guy. He does a phenomenal job. We've got S&amp;R Construction, who unfortunately increased their, their, their costs this year. They're the, the general contractor. They're charging us $2 this year, so they went up 100% from the time we did the project before, when it was at $1. Lowell Central Electric and Lowell Iron Works, again, Lowell folks have significantly been really good on their pricing, so they're contributing. And Boston Lights West, which is also a Lowell connection that deals with the lighting contractor, Lumen Pulse, has likewise been extremely good in putting pricing together to make this project plausible. So I applaud all of them. I applaud the city for working with us on all the lighting projects that Fred mentioned, and I am very pleased to offer this project to the city as a gift. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Jay. I can't begin to tell you how excited I am about this. When we heard about the Cox Bridge ready to get lighting, I couldn't believe it. And when we saw that, it was, it's just magnificent. It's so soothing. It's comforting. It's like a tranquilizer. When you look at it, it's so pretty. And now to hear that we're going to do the Olet Bridge, I can't even believe it. So I'm very, very grateful, and I'm honored to accept that as a gift. And to the anonymous donor, whoever she is, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Counselor Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to echo what Counselor Mercia said, that, you know, again, we thank you very much for this, and we do thank anonymous donor that has stepped up to the plate and helped out in this, in this project. The, just a quick question. I want to thank you, Jay, and Fred for the, for the presentation. The maintenance, is there a maintenance budget or program involved with this?
There is. I think, couple key things, is the, the state of the art of the lighting that is there, hopefully, short of, you know, a, a major storm or some significant vandalism, won't have to be even dealt with for many, many years. That said, there is a maintenance fund set up for the Cox Bridge, and there is a maintenance fund set up, will be set up for the Olet Bridge as well, so that if something does happen, and there needs to be some attention to that, it'll be taken care of, again, without taxpayer dollars. So thank you for that question.
Yeah, thank you very much, and thank, once again, the donor. This, this is going to be a great asset to the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I just want to personally thank Fred Faust and Jay Lenihan for all the work that you've done. And now you've added John Geer, another worker to this project, and of course, my former secretary, James Ostis. You know, we've talked about doing this, there's been talk about lighting up the canals, doing things with the canals for many, many years, way before us, any one of us were here. And what they've done, what you've done, is taken a dream and made it a reality, and this just bodes well for our future. So I want to thank the city manager for working with them, and I want to thank them again for all the, all the effort. I don't think people realize, I mean, this is almost like a full-time job for you guys, and you've done very well to do this.
It is my full-time job.
Yeah, it's not easy, is it? But no, thank you for what you've done.
But as far as jobs, I mean, you mentioned John Geer, and it reminds me, in your packet, you will see there was a press release that we recently did for the Waterways Initiative, and two people got hired for the Waterways Initiative, John being one, and Mayor Laper, another person. And that's the manpower we need to continue to have these things go forward. Those folks were hired by the generosity of a variety of other donors that invested in this vision, that had said, this is really cool, and yes, we do want to leverage one of the greatest assets we've got in the city, which is the canals, and that takes work. And part of it's going to be some research, and how do we, how do we present that? How do we make cases for support? And we've got two great folks that are on board. As Fred noted earlier, we had somebody that was really good, but the city stole him back, so, but, so we're moving on from that, but.
No, but again, I want to thank you, and the thing is, I think what we'll need from you, though, to, you know, to present to the city manager and to the city council, what type of support, I know this is no class of the city, but the thing is, if we want this to be a true success, at some point, the city's going to have to take part in this program. So we're going to need to know how this city can step up to the plate.
Well, I think the city's just, just generally with, I mean, the city, for example, I met with the DPW, I met with the DPD, I met with the electrician. We go through all of that. That has just been phenomenal. They've been so responsive to us trying to line up what we need to do. And then just, you know, the day-to-day stuff. I've found the city to be there. I've chatted with this, with the city manager a number of times, and yeah, the, the city's been extremely supportive of this, and I couldn't be more grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Joe Ratch.
I'd love to introduce Joe because Joe, and I don't, I'm not so sure if it's still his title, but he was the president of the Renaissance Condo Association, and we met with them, as I mentioned in my comments earlier, back in January, and Joe was a gracious, gracious host, and we had a fabulous meeting there as well. So it's my pleasure to introduce Joe Ratch.
Hi, Joe Radwitch, 35 River Walkway, Lowell, Mass. I know a lot of you guys, and some of you have been to the Renaissance on the River. I am the president of the board, although I'm here as a private citizen. And I have my own visuals here, and you're like, well, what is this? And so this is a book my wife and I made, and it's photos, our wedding is in this, our trip to London and Paris and all these things. But another thing in here. Picture of this bridge. But that bridge is not from the walkway. That bridge is from my couch. So if you live on the Renaissance on the River, like I do, I see this out of every single window, right? So when this bridge lighting came up, we're like, huh, well, we like the idea of bridge lighting. It's a fantastic asset, and as you know, some of you know, I've been here talking about the River Walk, and that's something that, you know, is really important to us, a real asset. But I'm like, ooh, what's that going to look like? So Jay reached out, said, hey, can I come? You know, I want to bring the architect. We had a big group, came down, and some of you have been into our big meeting room. We were all there. They showed all the plans, which were fantastic, and you think you guys ask hard questions because everybody here is saying, I'm going to look at this out my window. I'm going to look at this out my window. What about the lights? What about this? What about that? And they all had really good answers. And so we started with some trepidation, you know, and I'm seeking more for myself, I guess, but overall, coming out of that meeting, everybody's really positive. We didn't hear anything on the board about people saying, go shut that down. And everybody's pretty positive, so we think it's going to be great. We think it's going to make the, my view look better at night, because if I had it before, I'd have two pictures, the daytime and the nighttime. And then I do think it's going to make the River Walk better, because we've been talking about, you know, we need more traffic on that. We need more people there. We don't need people hanging out and sleeping under the bridge. If we light the bridge up, there's going to just be more traffic, more everything, and it's going to end up being a, better for everybody. So just as a citizen who lives right next to the thing, I totally support this, and I'll stick it in the book when it's done.
Thank you. Okay, we need a roll call. Clerk, any further questions? Roll call. Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Samaras.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Conway.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Okay. We have four minutes to the public hearing, so why don't we ask Mr. Lenihan to come up, and we'll just take a quick group picture with the councils and.
Thank you.
John. Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Thanks, all right. 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 Okay, we'll go to 2.2. Vote to cancel city council meeting 2/18/20. Waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion. City, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, City of Lowell, and the city council vote to cancel city council meeting on February 18, 2020. Second, motion by Councilor Drinkwater, second by Councilor Mercia. Roll call.
Councilor Mercia.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Councilor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Samaras.
Yes.
Councilor Chow.
Yes.
Councilor Conway.
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Councilor Elliott.
Yes.
Eight yeas.
Being 7:00, we'll go into the utility public hearing. 3.1, National Grid requests installation of new handhole and 100-foot feet of underground electric conduit at 1521 Surrey Lane. Open up the public hearing to all those in favor.
Good evening, council. My name is Paul Pellegrini, and I'm an engineer with National Grid out of the Mermerack Valley. And I'm here to ask permission if we could install a three-inch conduit from handhole 103 to handhole 689. It's for a new home that's being built at 15 Surrey Lane, and it's all underground service in that, on that street.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone else in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer to the wire inspector for important recommendation by Councilor Mercia, second by Councilor Rourke. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Yep. Next we go communications from the mayor, from the manager. So opening up for motion A, new business recognition procedures. Councilor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much from Diane Trad for this response, which was to a motion that I made. I think the least we can do when businesses want to put their life savings, their sweat, their energy, their talents into the city, that we should, part of that package that we give them would be to include that they have the right to at least come to the podium, and we can give them at least five minutes of our time, so that they can promote their business to the people that are watching at home. I think it's the least we could do. That's why I made it into the motion. So this would be their first maiden voyage into advertisement by coming before us and doing that. So thank you very much. I, I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Councilor Noon.
Mr. Mayor, while we at the subject of economic development, maybe the managers can announce the hiring of the director of the economic development at DPD?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the council. I did put a communication on everyone's desk tonight. As you know, we have been conducting a search for the director of economic development, and we have, I have appointed Christine McCall, who has been working here at the city since 2015, as the economic development director. We did have a robust search that went on, and Christine brings a lot of experience to this job. She joined planning and development staff as an assistant planner in 2015. She excelled at her responsibilities there, moved up to be an associate planner, and finally a senior planner. And she has worked with the planning staff, she has worked with a number of critical economic development projects with DPD. She coordinates and communicates with attorneys, she knows regulations regarding what's required of businesses and the like. And she's also worked with public outreach and engagement. She worked on the open space plan that was presented to the council a few months back and adopted by the council. So her understanding of the development landscape, the neighborhoods, the character of the city, and we are very pleased that she will start this job the week of February 17, I believe. And in addition, she is a lifelong Lowellian, so...
Thank you. Councilor Noon.
If I may want to add, Mr. Mayor, I know Christine McCall, and I know that she have vast experience in terms of zoning and planning and all that. That's really critical for economic development director, to have more or less a one-stop-shop kind of knowing all, so that respond or answers right away to clientele that approach her and asking question as to, "How can I do this? This way or that way?" She have all those answers, and I'm sure she's going to be a great additions to the director of planning development.
Thank you. Any further discussion? That's a good choice, Madam Manager. She's a very hard worker. B, parking kiosks. Any questions on that? Councilor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did get a report. This was very good. We learned there are 176 kiosks in the city. A lot of them are old, and they need to, their batteries need to be replaced. But it says, "We are installing antennas." What does that mean?
Mr. Mayor, Terry Ryan, the director of parking, is here.
Good evening, through Mayor to you. So last summer, last spring, the kiosks were upgraded to 4G, to the cellular service 4G from 3G. New modems were installed in all 176 kiosks, but unfortunately, the corresponding antennas were not installed.
Is that something that you see outside of the square box, or it's inside?
It's inside the box.
I see.
And currently, as the technician goes to kiosks to make fixes, he is installing the antennas as we go along.
Okay, I thought it was the box and you'd see an antenna up there.
No, no.
Okay, that's fine.
It's completely inside the box.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott. Don't go anywhere, Mr. Ryan.
Don't go anywhere. Don't run away.
More questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Ryan, for the report. I have to tell you, it's, this report reflects the neglect that these parking kiosks have been through. And it's disappointing, because we, you know, we put great effort into parking in order for these spaces to rotate, it helps the businesses, and, you know, the fact that there's 20 kiosks per day, and we have all heard those, these complaints for quite some time. They're not working, and then they get tickets. So, and it's been a source of frustration. I know that, I brought it up, we've all brought it up, that we're going to have a parking system, we have to make it work. And it's also encouraging to know that we're going to go to the app and encourage people to do that.
Absolutely.
But I guess it's good news that we've gotten on top of it, because there are many, many of these kiosks that have malfunctioned, and, you know, I'll stop, because people have complained a lot, and this shows the reason why, they've been completely neglected. I mean, I know it says eight to 10 years, but seemingly, I would hope the useful life of these machines aren't just eight or 10 years, but they just haven't been maintained.
That, that's, that is true. The condition is a problem in the lack of maintenance. And also, the technology is a bit out of date in terms of it being solar-powered. Many of these, and we're going to be working with the university and so forth, because some of the, the angles, they're just not getting the solar rays that they need to be powered. So there are a lot of ongoing issues, but when the parking study is done, this is going to be one of the things we're asking the, the study to look at as well.
Well, they're not cheap, and we were, we were sold on these, that they were going to be, you know, moneymakers. How long, what's the plan for future kiosks? Is there...
So I've started to look at different vendors and different technologies out there. There are pay-by-space, like we have. There are meters, and there are kiosks, and there's also license plate recognition. And, and that is the technology that I'm looking at right now, because I think that's the best technology out there, and I think we can check a lot of vehicles that way. We can, a lot quicker. So I think that's the technology that we want to look at.
That's good news, because we've had discussions in the past. I don't know if you were here, Madam Manager, but, you know, information not being transferred because of the malfunctioning machines, it seems like it's one thing after another, and I don't think we should be spending, you know, more money, bad money, after a problem. So that's good to know. I appreciate the point. I appreciate the fact that efforts, like a significant effort, we're training people, we're ordering the parts, the vendor has been on-site, so these are all good things, which perhaps should have been done quite some time ago. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. And we do want to let the public know at home that, you know, the, the parking attendants who go around do check the kiosks and are told not to ticket that area if the kiosk is down. And in addition, Mr. Ryan has the ability from his office to check the kiosks, which he does every day, and if it's down, they put out the word not to ticket. So we're trying the best we can. But people who are out there, if they find it's not working, there is a telephone number on the kiosk that they should call, and if they, if it's a kiosk that's out, and they happen to get a ticket, they should appeal that, because that, they should not have gotten a ticket. So we just want people to know that. We do our best to not ticket them if the kiosks are out. And that's checked by you, Mr. Ryan, by the...
Laz parking also has visibility into that.
Laz parking checks them every day, too. So, but if for some reason they did get one, they should absolutely contact the parking in terms of an appeal.
Okay, one last question. Mr. Ryan, do you, when do you anticipate all of these being up and running, so you're not seeing 20 alarms or so a day?
I'm working with the vendor metric right now to schedule a technician from their company to come up for three straight days, and I hope that'll happen in February. And they will, we will have the pots in, in store right then, and I think after those three days, we should have a majority of the issues resolved.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for staying on top of this.
And going from there, it'll just be, keep going.
Thank you. Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like other councilor, Councilor Mercia and Councilor Elliott, I realize that the machine is old. I understand that, and it's in need of repair. And I know that now, hearing from Mr. Ryan, that step is, step was taken to address it. I'm just asking that even just step taken to address it, but you have to really be vigilant about it, and to, to really fixing those kiosks that's not working. That way, you know, people, I mean, like you said, Madam Managers, you know, people get tickets, some of them, they don't know what to do with it. So they end up eat it. Not eat it literally, but pay for it. You know, pay it, you know? So, so...
And they should contact us about that.
So, so, so we need to really be vigilant about it. So I thank you for the report.
Because we do have a record when the kiosks are out, right? So it's, it's not like we couldn't trace it back. If someone has a ticket on a certain date, at a certain meter, we know if that kiosk was not working. So they should notify us, but we're trying not to ticket if the kiosk is out.
But, but between, between, for me, if I was to miss work one day, I'm going to take that $10. I'm going to pay that $10, $20 ticket. I'm not going to miss one day of work.
Well, obviously, we don't want a ticket if they're not working.
So we handle the appeals online. There is a website right on the ticket. They can go right to that website and do an online appeal. And we have a municipal hearing officer, Elliot Veloso, who will review. And so you shouldn't have to take time out of work. We can handle most of these appeals right online.
Thank you for the information, Brian, and Manager.
Thank you. Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the manager. Madam Manager, actually, my wife and I do have the Passport app, which is really easy to use, and I don't know, only because I haven't been to a kiosk because of the app. Is there signage, is there signage on the kiosk about the app?
Yes, so all of the kiosks indicate that you can use the app. And just last week, we started putting it on Henry Marchand's Weekend Reminder...
Yes.
...that you could, you know, how to load the app and get the app on your phone, so you can use it downtown.
You know, it is really, really easy. It tells you what spots are available, if you go to a spot, if it's available, and you can actually tell if someone's parking illegally, because if the spot says it's available and the car there, you know, you can tell. But I don't, I'm not sure if it's Manchester or Nashville, they, those cities may offer some sort of percentage discount, or maybe an extra 10 minutes longer if you use an app, instead of going to the kiosk. Maybe it's a way to promote it. Is that something that ever came about?
Yeah, we've just recently talked to Passport about offering that, and how we can set up, because we're still learning how to use our end of Passport. And there are the, the ability that we could have a business offer five or 10% off if you pay for parking out as part of your dinner. And then the restaurant would make up the difference. So the full, the full parking fee is being paid, but the restaurant would make up that difference.
Okay, and then just a last question. If the kiosk is out, the app still works for that spot?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, the, when you talked about the appeal process, you know, I think about a particular case that, when they called me, they were very confused about the whole situation, and why they got a ticket and so forth. And they had difficulty with the language when they come down for an appeal. So on this, on this online appeal, is it done in different languages at all?
The online appeal is just done in English.
Okay.
But we, we do offer, and Elliott is offering, in-person appeals also.
Is that, is that in there, where it'll say it in a different language, to say if, if you want an in-person appeal?
No, it does not say that, so it would be something we'd have to look at adding. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any questions on motion C response, traffic calming West Meadow Road? Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report, Natasha. It's, it's pretty thorough. I do have a question, because the first, the first paragraph does suggest traffic calming measures to reduce the speed on West Meadow, and I filed this as a result of a pedestrian that got hit on that street. But it doesn't suggest anything in the meantime. I, I do understand and recognize that we want to do an effective traffic calming study once Market Basket opens, but in the meantime, can we, are there some interim measures that can take place, because it's, Market Basket isn't even open yet? And it's, it's a, it's a very busy, and it's very dangerous because of two schools and the cut-through traffic that's coming from Drakehead or New Hampshire, right through Patacaville. So I know that, when I brought the motion up, we talked about speed bumps or other traffic calming. I know it's a busy, busy road, so maybe, you know, I'm not sure what the traffic calming can be, but in the interim, can we put a, you know, the radar, I think it's called a traffic comm, to let people know what their speed limit is? And I know people know that, you know, they're not going to get a ticket or anything, but I do think it is somewhat effective in the meantime.
So that, those are effective, particularly for the first six months they're installed, and then they tend to lose their efficacy. What you're referring to is a dynamic speed warning sign. Whereas your drive-by detects your speed, and it flashes at you in a, usually in red if you're going too fast, and sometimes can say, "Slow down." So, yeah, that might be an effective solution. The pedestrian who was hit was a student at one of the schools and was actually crossing in the crosswalk, and it was, my understanding was hit by another parent who was, or had already picked up their kid and was rushing off. So there is, you know, I think an element of the schools communicating with the parents about, you know, really being careful around the schools, obviously. Whereas your drive-by detects your speed, and it flashes at you in a, usually in red if you're going too fast, and sometimes can say, slow down. So yeah, that might be an effective solution. The pedestrian who was hit was a student at one of the schools and was actually crossing in the crosswalk, and it was, my understanding was hit by another parent who was, or had already picked up their kid and was rushing off. So there is, you know, I think an element of the schools communicating with the parents about, you know, really being careful around the schools, obviously. But I do think that a dynamic speed warning signal would be inappropriate, and we could potentially have a solar-powered one, because I don't know what the electrical watering is out there.
Regardless of who hit whom, that area during the beginning of school, and Counselor Rourke can, I'm sure, testify and speak to this a lot better than I can, because he's a lot more closer, but it's, it's chaos. It's, there's no other word for it. There's just people dropping off, and the neighborhood organization and myself and Counselor Rourke would just, we don't want to see that happen. And you can just, if you sit there for any length of time, and I have, it's brewing. It's coming again. We have cars blocking buses, picking up waste, you know, the waste truck the other day-
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
I know you saw it. So, you know, Market Basket, Market Basket doesn't open for quite some time, and then six months after, I just think that's too long to wait to do.
Okay. Yeah, I don't disagree that, and a traffic, some measure might be appropriate. And I, and I didn't mean to in any way diminish the concern about the-
No, no, no. No, I didn't suggest that. No.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mercy, and then Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. I appreciate the report. I know that we're going to have any, some mitigation for the additional trips generated in that area by Market Basket, and there'll be a roundabout in the intersection of Old Ferry Road and Farnham Avenue. I just would like an additional report that could be provided with an additional report as to the future of the property at the end of Old Ferry Road on the right. I want to know how much taxes is that generated? What is the property worth? Are we offering him the right amount? I'm just concerned as to trying to be fair here with people that paid a particular price every year for taxes, but I don't know what they're going to be offered. And it's just more information that I'd need on that property. How much are we going to take? We take it at all? What's happening? So-
We can get you a full report on that.
Thank you.
I think initially, there was a plan to take some of the property. Currently, I don't think there's a plan to take any, but we will get you a full report, Counselor.
Thank you.
Your Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to Counselor Elliott's point about the, the speed signage, the radars. Last night at the Patacaville Citizens Council meeting, that was actually brought up. The request was made by more than one resident. If, if that, those radars are available for West Meadow and/or for Farnham Ave, you know, to the Counselor's point, those, those areas in Patacaville are pretty high-traffic and fast-moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Motion response, public safety infrastructure funding. Any questions on that? Counselor Elliott?
No, no questions, Mr. Mayor. It's a good letter, I think well-constructed, sent to the delegation and the governor. And considering that money was earmarked by you, Madam Manager, it would be, it would be very helpful, certainly, to get, to get that appropriated. So anything we can do to reach out to make that happen. They, we're right in, right at the outset, as you know, of the appropriation budget process, so our timing was, was good. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion E response, downtown activity. Counselor Samaras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Superintendent Richardson?
Now you have to talk, Chief.
Yeah. No, I want to thank you for this report. This was a very well-done report, you know, on this issue. And I have to admit, since it was brought up, I've talked to a number of people who live in the downtown, and they feel this is the type of information that they would like to see. Couple of questions, though, I have, okay? What I'm impressed with, you've done the, you've done the years, 2017, 2018, 2019. In all three areas, you're showing a reduction in costs. Can you explain that?
Well, if I go back in my mind, 2017, we realized we were kind of spending a little more money than we should. So we had to kind of take a look at the balance of what are we getting for our buck? So when there wasn't that much activity down there on a Thursday night, I believe, my memory serves me right, that we kind of pulled back the Thursday night detail, and concentrated on the busier nights from data provided by our crime analyst. So going until like 2018 and 2019, we keyed on the busy nights, if you would.
Okay. A couple of questions I have in general. I think you've addressed them, but some businesses, when I saw the report, had many more calls to their establishment than others. Let me ask you this. I mean, if, if a store, if a business has, will say over 50 calls made in a period of time, or something like that, do you have the ability to sit down with them and, in a sense, negotiate with them in any way, or does it have to be something egregious, which has to go to the ABC or something like that?
Well, obviously, I mean, we are, at the police department, are on the same page as everybody else. We want businesses downtown to succeed. And, but I have a huge responsibility here, here, making sure that people in the city are safe. And we try to work with the bars. You know, if, like I've touched on before, that when we do comstat every two weeks, we just don't wait for something to happen. If something rises to the level of four calls or more, then the sector captains need to answer to me, basically, why we're going there, what the problems are. And if it's an issue at one of the bars, then we take action. We go downtown and see what's going on with that particular bar. You know, is it overcrowding? Is it over-serving? Is it, you know, the wrong clientele getting in, and not the people making the right calls at the door? So we don't really wait for it to get that far. We would never do that, that'd be a problem for us.
Okay. No, the thing is, I think every city council can say very clearly to anyone in the city, that what your office has done has been terrific work. I mean, I don't think there's a city in Massachusetts that you could walk the streets and be as safe. But at the same time, some of the bars, I know with IDs, a concern that I have are college students. This is a college town, and college students, underage, that they do some drinking.
Mm-hmm.
But the thing is, it's, it's a difference of drinking at a house party or something like that, as opposed to going to some of these bars in the downtown. And I know IDs now can, can really be very difficult to figure out if they're real or not. Can you help about, how do you help, how do you work with bar owners on that?
Well, I think it's a new report. And the officers that have been assigned to downtown to work these details, in particular Lieutenant Peaslee, you can't blame the bars entirely, because, you know, even when they have the scanners, these IDs are so, done so well now, that the scanners don't even pick them up. So there is a method to do it. I really don't want to speak about publicly about that. But we were more than glad to share that with the bar owners. We do run this class, and hopefully they will show up and show good faith, that we are, obviously are showing good faith there, by showing that we're willing to work with them, and we want them to succeed. But we're just asking that they do what's required of them. So, because if they do that, they never have to see us. I mean, we'll still be downtown. Our job is to be down there, because I know the bars can't control everything that happens down there. That's our responsibility. But yeah, there is a mechanism, and the IDs are very good now.
But, but you understand, I mean, if anything were to happen to one of the college students, I mean, it would not bode well for the city of Lowell.
Well, I think we had these conversations all along, since it started. This just didn't start with me being the chief here. It started when I was the captain in charge of downtown, to the deputy's job, to the chief's job. And you're right, it's just a, you know, some people just don't belong downtown. And I know probably many of us have been there, but it's a different clientele out there now today. There's some-
That's the point.
So that's, that's what I'm afraid of, that we're doing so well. And God forbid, if anything were to happen to one of our underage students inside that bar, it would be a big problem for us.
Okay, a couple of, you have more officers, you know, on the street. Do they walk in pairs, or do they walk individually into the different areas?
Usually, we try to keep them in pairs. And, you know, obviously, you know, with the support of the council and my boss, the city manager, to be able to have a precinct downtown to show that we are truly committed to what happens down there, for the businesses and the residents, and the people that go downtown to use the restaurants and bars down there. I mean, if you look at the third page here, and you look at 17, 18, and 19, in the year 2019, we conducted 574 proactive patrols. That's pretty aggressive police work. That's people, boots on the ground, addressing issues, and proactive patrols are usually, they'll sign off at a hotspot location, whether it be a bar, whether it be a corner, whether it be a parking lot at Enterprise Bank. This is the areas that they're directed to go. As a result of comstat, information is provided by us, and the sector captains lead the charge, and the people who are in charge of that detail and responsibility is patrols happen. So our people are down there. We're just asking that the bars work with us, and if we need to provide them information to help them succeed, by all means, we'll do that.
Okay. Another question is, it showed the number of injuries some of our officers have received. That, I mean, that's just statistics, but what type of injuries do they receive? I mean, are they serious, or is it, you know?
I mean, yeah, we, you know, we've, I mean, I don't know if it was 17 or prior to that, but obviously, we had an officer almost lose his life, and he's actually had to retire on a disability some years back, because there was a fight in the street. I believe there was a firearm involved. And somehow, almost like how Katie Tyne lost her, her life, this officer got tangled up on the vehicle and was dragged from Middle Street onto Shattuck on the market, where he was finally thrown from the car, and the car crashed down in front of the Market Street garage. So that's probably the, the most violent incident we've had down there, thank God. But the rest of the injuries are, you know, wrestling in the street with people that are 20 years younger than you. You know, hand injuries, elbow injuries, it could be numerous things.
Okay. I mean, no, thank you, thank you for that. I mean, because that's the one thing that we all worry about, that something will happen to one of our first responders, and that's not what we want to see.
I live it every day.
I understand that. Can we get another report like this, say, six months from now? I mean, and the thing that I would like to hear, though, is, are you getting some feedback from the bar owners that they're willing to work with us? Or are there some that are not? Because the thing is, this is not something we're just going to let slide by at this point. I think your department's working very, very hard, but it's still a difficult situation down there. And the thing is, I think the bar owners are going to have to show that they're willing to work with us. And that's a concern that I have.
Well, I would-
I'm not saying, I'm not saying come before us and say, bar, you know, bar A is this, bar B is this. But the thing is, in general, you know, can you give us responses to the support that you're getting from them? You've got the support from us.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that. No, I, I think that, you know what, I mean, obviously, I know a lot of the bar owners, there are many people, because they've been in business for years. There are some people down there that I would not consider low people, that might have different reasons for what they do. But I think that, obviously, there's, there can be a conversation here, and there can be a follow-up after six months, because what I think the bars really need to understand, too, is, is kind of for their own protection.
Yes.
Because if someone gets hurt in this bar, I don't know how they'll ever get themselves insured with another insurance company. And they, and they, they need to see the big picture here. And this is, we're not the enemy here. Again, I use that term a lot with our younger people, but, you know, we're down there trying to do a job and make sure that they're successful. But the number one priority here for, for me is that people are safe.
No, thank you for your effort. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Carnway, and Counselor Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the police chief. Where you mentioned, with Mr. Samaras, Counselor Samaras said that 2017 to 18 and 19, there was a decrease in the funds covering downtown. And we talked about it, you mentioned it's, actually, it's a decrease of about $30,000. Is it time that we take a look at that number and start to reverse it? Would that, does that make, would that make any sense at this point, do you think, if we, if we have some issues and we want to try to clean them up? If, if we had in 2017, $84,000, then we get down to 65, and then 53. Is it, would it be wise for us to try to increase that amount of money, if at all possible? Because I think you, you certainly have the, you know, the, the council certainly supports the police department, and I'm sure they would probably do it in that area. Does that, is that a possibility, Chief? Does that make any sense, do you think?
Well, it's a lot of money. And obviously, we go by, you know, what data was generated by what's going on downtown. And we try to be fiscally responsible and not try to waste money. You know, if we're there for the right, at the right nights of the week, in the right hours, and that coupled with if we can, you know, work with the bars and try to reduce a lot of the incidents we're having. Right now, I think that's the path we need to go. But just to, you know, add an extra shift, or add two hours, or add another officer, I don't know if we're there yet, because we do use, there is on-duty people that are assigned downtown before the detail even starts, who are involved in policing the bars, making sure that people safely get out of those bars and get home.
Do the, do the bar owners, do they pay, or have they paid for details themselves down there?
You know what? I know years ago that there were details at certain bars, but to be honest, it's not a popular job right now with police officers. Obviously, with all the things that are going on, with all the work that's being done in the city here with construction jobs, honestly, it's much easier to work a road job and wave to people when they're going by, as opposed to having someone fight with in the middle of Middle Street. So those jobs, and they really pick, and they say, you know what, why would I do that? And maybe if there wasn't so much, there'd be more interest. But we can't force police officers to do that, because once we do that, we automatically do that. It changes the money we spend. It forces us to spend overtime, as opposed to detail rate, which again, now we go back to spending the taxpayers' money, as opposed to people who own those bars, the higher details.
Right. The IDs, and I think that Counselors have mentioned, and you've mentioned it too, that they're incredible counterfeit. I thought that a bar could, if they take a look at someone and they say, there's no way this person's 21 years old. Can they be, they can refuse that person? Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, it's their property. I mean, they can basically turn around and say, you know, for whatever reason, as long as they don't base it on someone's race, or gender, or many other factors. But they can basically say, you know what, I just don't feel comfortable having you here. There's other places you can go downtown, but I don't feel comfortable having you there. If you don't feel completely safe to letting, you know, yourself, you're letting in a person that's of age, and it's not going to be a problem.
I, I've heard from some people that what, what ends up happening is that they use that fake ID, and if the police come in, and the police take a look at someone and see that they certainly look like they could be underage, and to ask for an ID, and they say, well, I don't have an ID. Well, how'd you get in? I don't know. I just, they just let me in. Is that, is that something that happens a lot? Because obviously, you can't, you can't frisk the person and, and to see if they have an ID, which, you know, it would be a fake ID. So do they just decline and say that they get in, they let, they let us in, and we didn't have an ID? Is that, is that the terminology?
I've never personally heard that story from any of the officers that work it. But obviously, for most part, when our officers show up, you can tell who the underage kids are by the people that flee out the side door. And after a couple of times of that happening, which we're kind of hoping they would get the message, and move on and go back to the frat houses or the dorms where they should be, we started, after a couple of incidents, we started to block both doors, and we obviously accounted a lot more of our university kids.
Yeah, just one quick question, the last question here. When it says, direct service incidents, what, what does that, what does that mean, Chief?
Direct services, are we looking at the downtown, the calls, basically?
Yeah.
Well, if you look at it right, there was many, when they pulled all these calls, they eliminated proactive policing, which is what I talked about earlier, where officers would be assigned to, you know, check on the sharemark, check on, you know, the parking lot at the Enterprise Bank, you know, check down at the corner by the old court, and they would sign off. So that's eliminated. Traffic stops eliminated, animals, accidents, service calls, missing. So basically, all the calls that you see on here now are like direct services calls, like they need the police to be there.
Oh, all right. Okay, so it wouldn't be-
Whether it's for, you know, a fight, an argument, or even maybe to check out someone that they think might be not of age. So it's kind of all, like the service calls, I guess.
Okay.
The best way I can explain it.
It, it, it wouldn't be somebody calling up and saying, by the way, there's a fight across the street from a particular bar, and then all of a sudden, that's written down as, as, in these statistics, as being one of those numbers? Is that?
I'm not going to stand here and tell you that that's never happened, because I've seen that.
No, no, I understand that.
No, no. I mean, you know, because the dispatcher might, like, you know, say, all right, and write down-
Right.
The wrong side of Market Street, and it reflects that it happened-
Right, yeah.
Not on the other side.
Right.
I know what you're saying.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thanks for the report.
Mm-hmm.
To me, this validates the reason why I brought it up several months ago. And we should have no trepidation when it comes to looking to reduce the hours of operation from 2:00 to 1:00. If you just look at the total number of calls in, in over a three-year period, we're talking almost 4,000 calls downtown. You know, the notion that let's, you know, we're going to wait for another report in six months, for what? The trend is not getting any better. It's getting worse. We have three years of data here. Our interest should be- Our interest should be to benefit the protection of the people that live downtown, the protection of our police officers and to protect, quite frankly, the integrity of the city and the downtown. This is not economic development, in my opinion. We're spending tens of thousands of dollars for officers who have to leave the neighborhood to go downtown. We're asking the state police to come in as much as they can to provide additional support for when the bars get out. Isn't that the red flag that we see time and time again? Police, we're spending ten thousand dollars on a captain to go to license and license commission meetings because of problems downtown with the bars. To me, I think this is somewhat of a no-brainer. We shouldn't be looking at certain establishments and where the calls are coming in because overall, let's look at it this way, what if we did close? What if the bars weren't downtown operating so late? These statistics would go away. I mean, we're talking about medical calls, five hundred, protective proactive policing, the chief mentioned. There were two hundred fights, there were two hundred and thirty-four disturbances, seventeen breaking and entering into motor vehicles. Then it goes to this, this page, we're looking, there were two hundred and twenty-eight arrests. This is just in the downtown for those folks at home. You know, it goes, it just goes on. I mean, I don't know what else, what other information we're going to look at. And furthermore, why should the taxpayers have to be worrying and working with the bar owners? We have laws, they're on the books, they're supposed to comply with them. Why do we have to be working with them? I know I'm going to be the bad guy, I know the bar owners are going to, you know, but that doesn't matter to me because I think this contributes to us losing the downtown. And that's the last thing that we need. No one's saying close too early, we're saying from, close from two o'clock to one o'clock. We've been going through this since 2010. I guess I've been here long enough to know, 2010, we tried to make some, no, excuse me, 2011. Then again, in 2014, we went through this whole iteration again, had bar owners in here, we were going to have them have, pay for their own details, they were going to close by one, people had to be out by two, and that was going to reduce the violence and the problems downtown. Nothing has changed, it's gotten worse. So I'd like to make a motion that we reduce, because I don't want to get another report in six months to tell me the same thing, that we're going to try to work with the bar. The police officers have plenty and more important things to do than babysit all of the complaints downtown. So I know I'm, you know, I'm concerned, we've been here enough in the past. We want the economic development downtown, but not at two o'clock. Nothing good happens, in my opinion, after one o'clock. Close at twelve, out by one, instead of close by one, out by two. I think it's a systemic problem downtown and the way to get rid of these statistics and the money that is being spent is to close an hour earlier. Here's a notion, why don't we close at one and see how that works in six months? Let's see if that reduces the number of problems, violations and calls. The calls that the police have to go to and that means the neighborhoods and the people paying the taxes, those areas are being neglected. So that's my point, I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to send it to the Public Safety Committee to come back for a report and recommendation to the body on changing the bar operation hours from two o'clock to one.
There a second?
I would like to make a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Second, invite Councilor Conway.
Sure, Councilor Chow.
Sure, I'm sorry to cut off, but I want to make a comment, thanks so much, and this is to the chief. Excellent report, very detailed. When you increase, decrease the cost and increase the presence in downtown, it shows that you've done a lot of work. You're on point. And as Councilor Elliott said earlier, a lot of the plum calls, but the wee-wee hours, so to speak. Do we have a statistic whether the people who committed these offenses or crimes, are they local, are they Lowellians or they come from outside of the city? Do we have that, numbers in place?
I, we can obviously go through the arrest reports and see if, I mean, I know that obviously, there have been people that don't live in Lowell, arrested downtown Lowell. Many of them, the officers that worked at TTL, know many of the kids that come down there and then there's other times that they're very concerned about some of the kids that do come into downtown. So we can get a report on, you know, where these kids live, or people live over the last year or so to see where the, if they're mostly Lowell people or outside. We can do that.
All right, Councilor Samaras.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one thing, you know, when I brought up this motion, the one thing I thought of, I mean, if given my choice, I'd vote to turn back the hours, no question on that. But I also realized that I don't believe we have the votes to do that. So what I was hoping to do with this was to allow the chief to come up with, okay, what has he been doing? What type of work, what type of response, responses have the businesses made to him? Are they willing to work with them? There are, we know, certain businesses which are very, family-owned, have never had a problem. It's one of those things. But we also have businesses from the outside that could care less what happens in this city and have created very dangerous situations. And the one thing I don't want to be part of is something to say, we should have, we could have if something happened to one of our first responders. I mean, that's our, a college student or anybody. But the, but the purpose of the six months is to allow the chief to give us even more facts because I think if this continues and he's not getting the support that he really needs from the bar owners, I think we can get many condominium owners of the downtown here to speak on this issue and demand that we turn back the hours. But I'd like to give the chief the opportunity to work this out.
Okay, thank you, Councilor New.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great report and indicating which direction we should go. And I think I like Councilor Elliott's suggestions that we should send it to a subcommittee, Public Safety, chaired by Councilor Chow, to really giving opportunity to both, the establishment, urge them to work with what the chief suggested, how to use, how to identify the training, how to identify the fall ID. Those are some of the things that maybe working together between the establishment and the enforcement, police, as well as want to hear from the resident as well and say how they feel about, you know, what's going on now. Should there be a rollback or not? So this is a great opportunity to open it up to both the establishment and the resident to hear their input and so that the committee then can send, bring it back, as Councilor Elliott suggested. Thank you.
Sure, Councilor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I think more information is always useful in relative to the motion. I think, you know, hearing by the Public Safety Subcommittee makes sense. One thing I would like to kind of know from that is whether the issues that are happening in the wee hours downtown are really a product of the fact that it's closing time and people who have been downtown for a number of hours at that point are all, you know, letting out at one time? Or whether it's a product of the actual closing time? You know, would we be experiencing the same problems at 1:00 AM that we're currently experiencing it, too? And I don't know if there's any insight on that currently, but, you know, relative to, a relatively big decision that will have a financial impact on a lot of business owners downtown that are really trying to do things the right way. I think we definitely, you know, owe it to ourselves to make sure we, we look at that and make sure we're not doing something reactive when we could be experiencing the same problems earlier.
Sure, thank you, Councilor Mercier, then Councilor Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did happen to hear from a couple of business owners that said, gee, we didn't do anything wrong, but we're going to pay for this if the hours are rolled back. Lowell isn't the only one that closes at two and other communities close at one and then they're letting out and they're coming to Lowell. Three other communities within the immediate area, Dragan being one of them, they close at two as well. Before I support that, I would like the, some of the, well, whoever the businesses are that want to come in and speak and defend themselves as compared to people that live downtown and I'd like the chief and the police to weigh in on it. I don't have a problem with discussion, but if this was a vote to roll back the hours right now, I wouldn't support it for the simple reason, we need discussion on this. I understand if I lived downtown, I wouldn't want to hear brawls and I don't want to put the police in jeopardy, but I want to be fair all the way around. What we're doing here is we're blanketing the whole downtown area and we're saying to the good business owners, we're going to roll you back because this one down the street is causing trouble. That, to me, is not fair. These people that called me said, we're upstanding people in the community, we donate to charity, we have road races, we do, and they went on and on and on how they contribute to the fabric of this city. So I know the intention is good, I understand that, but I got to hear more before I support it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Councilor Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we certainly, I think everyone understands that things have to, have to change and they have to, they have to get safer in downtown. And again, I hate to take some restaurants or slash bars and end up closing an hour early when, they're not, they're not doing anything wrong, they're following by the rules and regulations. But I also think that, you know, there's some good points to be made that, that we need to fix these problems. If we don't fix the problems, then we have to look at another alternative and that might be taking and closing them an hour earlier. I, I'm wondering whether it's, this is a time, Mr. Mayor, that we could take my motion nine point two out of order because it kind of, it kind of comes into this situation here and I think we'd be, we'd be duplicating it if we look at that, if we take a look at that motion in a half an hour, an hour from now, we'd be probably repeating some of the stuff that we're talking about nine, nine-two.
Sure, first, let's, Councilor Elliott, can you clarify your motion and do you want a roll call?
If I could, Councilor, if I get your motion correct, it's a motion to refer to Public Safety Committee to develop recommendations concerning the hours of operations for downtown establishments.
Well, not recommendation, I like the motion, specifically, Mr. Clerk, I'm sorry if I was, I wasn't clear, that we, that the city council vote to roll back from two o'clock to one o'clock. That'll be the vote that would come out that, yeah, we support a recommendation to come and roll that back. Makes sense.
From, coming out of the Public Subcommittee?
Correct.
You don't want to make that motion to roll it back tonight?
No, 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 that's the motion to go.
To the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Correct, so you probably had it right, I'm sorry.
Okay, so do you want a roll call on that?
Well, no, on the motion, the more-
Motion?
Yeah, I mean, roll call, that's fine, but I just want to just follow up just briefly because I understand the concern, no one's trying to hurt, I am not trying to hurt businesses in the downtown. Lord knows, we've, we've worked to develop the downtown. My concern, I stated it earlier. But if we want to know about the businesses in this order, in this report, just in a one-year time, the, the number of calls, direct service calls to the bars, the data shows, quote, Blue Shamrock, seventy-four calls. Thirsty First, sixty-four calls. Smokehouse, thirty-six calls. Dudley's, twenty-seven. Cappy's, Copper Kettle, twenty-one. Old Court, twenty-one. The Safe, seventeen. These are just the most in that area, that's why we're focused, that's my concern. So we're not, we're not trying to focus on anyone. The point is, this is, this is on top of all of the incidences that have taken place. So I just personally feel we can kick this can down. Again, we talked about this in fourteen, working with the bar owners, putting protocols in place and, and I understand, but to me, what else, what else is going to change? Because nothing, nothing has changed, in my opinion, and it's only gotten worse. So to me, the alternative is not the Band-Aid approach, but to take measures that will stop all these things or bring them down to a, it's not even a manageable, I'll stop because it's going to the public safety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want a roll call on that?
Roll call, sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Could we have a clarification on the motion?
Can I have the clerk read the motion?
The motion is, it's a motion to refer to the Public Safety Subcommittee to report on, on a request for turning back hours of operation from two AM to one AM in the downtown establishments in the city of Lowell.
Roll call?
Councilor Mercier?
Yes.
Councilor New?
Yes.
Councilor Rourke?
Yes.
Councilor Samaras?
Yes.
Councilor Chow?
Yes.
Councilor Conway?
Yes.
Councilor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councilor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Nine yeses. There's a, there's a motion to take nine point two out of order as well?
I, I don't know if this is a timely motion for what we're just discussing or do you want to wait on it? It's up to you, I-
I could wait, to be honest with you.
That's fine.
Okay, so go to motion response F, calls to group homes. Any questions, Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is another motion that I filed. And again, similar to the bar problem downtown, we have a number of group homes in the city and we've supported them, we understand the need for them. These are for, you know, for troubled youth and so on. And of the five that are listed, the Grip Home on Wilder Street had five hundred and seven calls. We had to send police officers to this one location five hundred and seven times. So it's, it's no wonder when we all get complaints from taxpayers, when they say, in the, when the neighborhoods, they need a call, they need a car, they need a response and sometimes they don't come for twenty, thirty, forty minutes. If we look at the thousands of calls downtown and then literally the hundreds, this one was five hundred and seven to one. The Riverview on Varnamav had four hundred and sixty-one. We can put as many police officers on as we can afford and will still never, we're paddling upstream when it comes to some of these issues. So I, I do appreciate the report, Madam Manager and the Superintendent. They've reached out to, you know, these two group homes, they've met and they put a protocol in place. I don't know what repercussions we can institute, Madam Manager, because, you know, we're sending a lot of officers to certain locations and it's the responsibility of these privately owned homes. I understand they serve a public function, but they've got to maintain some law and order, if you will, in these homes.
Thank you, and through you to the council. So particularly the two homes that you mentioned, which I believe are both DCF, serve, serve DCF. It's a protocol that they had that they have to call the police and I believe what the police are trying to work on is changing that because sometimes it's, they may know the child isn't missing or maybe just late. Chief, if you want to address that?
Yes, Madam Manager, thank you. Yeah, obviously, this has been a big drain of services on us. So we actually sat down with the individuals, as the manager talked about. And it is true that there's five hundred and seven calls, but what we've done is a lot of these kids, obviously, as you said, you know, to have their issues, they've had challenges, they've hadn't had it easy. But what we do is if they're beyond their curfew, what the person will do then, it's in charge of the group home or someone that works there will bring the report to us. So these actual numbers of five oh seven and four sixty-one more reflect a back and forth. There may be times when they come to us, so if they come to us and they're over curfew, they will come back to us and let us know that they're back. It's only when they're actual missing, there's a concern by the people running that house. When they tell us that they return by policy, we need to go back to that house and have eyes on that particular individual because, God forbid, one of them falls through a crack and something happens overnight and this juvenile is, gets arrested, gets hurt, gets killed, whatever. So it is definitely a drain on services, but we've tried to balance that response out and work with those homes. But it is, it's a challenge and I'm sure it's, many cities face this.
No, I agree and I appreciate it because I know it's not an easy job, but when they're running through the neighborhoods and we have to send police officers and crews, it's the, the structure, the organizational structure at these various homes, they, they need to institute policies, which I appreciate they have. So it would be good to get a, to monitor this, Madam Manager, on, you know, every four, five, six months, just to see how the process is going. Thank you, chief.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Samaras, then Councilor Rourke.
Thank you. Many of us as councils at one time or another have made a motion in this area. I remember several years ago, there was one of the group homes, there were cars being stolen daily in the Lower Belvedere area and other, and other issues that they were dealing with. But chief, there's two issues, I guess, with all of this, is these are group homes, some are run better than others, you know that. So the question is, can you work with them? I mean, in other words, if they're, if they're well-run, but-
I mean, in other words, if they're well-run, but they have issues, it's the way it is. But the thing is, if they're not well-run and you have more issues to deal with, what can we do to protest this issue?
I know, obviously, you know, with the GRIP program, when it was in Lower Belvedere, there around Esma Street, that was a huge challenge for us. Crime increased in that neighborhood. We were able to work with them, you know, on this reporting procedure, you know, try to hold them as accountable as we could through DCF on, you know, what we expected, just only for the safety of the kids also. And you're right. It really comes down to, you know, who they hire to be in these school houses or whatever, group homes at night. And it's very important that they, you know, have more than one person on duty at the time so they can watch all the exits to make sure that these kids are staying inside where they belong and they're within curfew. So I think that they've made some efforts. I think that if I were to go back, my memory serves me right, that I think that these numbers, even as high as they are, are still lower than they were when the GRIP home was in Lower Belvedere. And that's been a work in progress, but it's something that we need to stay on and pay attention to. And that's the responsibility of the sector captains. You know, we have captains assigned to each sector of the city. So this is something that they need to watch. They need to... They're responsible for it. And they need to report back to the command staff on what they need, what we can do, whether it's, you know, call some of you sitting here to maybe see if you can help. And but, you know, we try... We work hard to try to keep these numbers down because it does affect our ability to police in the city.
I mean, the thing is, I think constituents should really realize that if there's any one group that sometimes shows major disrespect to our police officers, it's these young men and women because they just have no control, self-control. And the issue is, but the homes that are run properly, this doesn't take place. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's... These are difficult programs. They're not easy. They're not easy to run. They're necessary, but the thing is, there's two issues. One, how many are in this city versus other communities? And the question is, are they being supervised properly? Because if they're supervised properly, the problem can be dealt with. If they're not, I think it's beyond anything that... Because the police are put into a position, they can't do it. I mean, they can't... Do you know what I'm saying? They can't cuff them. They can't correct, Chief.
Yeah.
You know, you're limited to what you can do.
Kind of hands-off.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I know the report came out, there's basically two addresses, the two homes I were talking about. You know, and both of those homes are associated with DCF, you know? And they're not men and women. They are children. They are juveniles. And anybody that knows anything about DCF, you know, some of these kids come from just horrible, terrible backgrounds, whether they were abused physically or sexually or come from, you know, drug houses and so forth. So unfortunately, you know, they're better off where they are here until they find stable housing and then being back home where a lot of the abuse, whether it be emotional or physical, happens. You know, you should never wish any kid to be in any of these houses. You know, and obviously, the Superintendent's correct. You know, you're not going to arrest somebody that runs away from a home, but you are required to take that person, juvenile, to a hospital to be drug tested because you don't know if they took something while they were missing for a half hour or an hour. If you bring him back to the house and all of a sudden, you know, the worst happens. They have to be searched. They have to be talked to if there was any, you know, suicidal ideation that was involved or homicidal instincts that were involved. So, you know, I understand, you know, the concern, and it definitely is some. But basically, these are two addresses in the city that deal with 99% of what the motion was based on. But again, you know, the problems that these juveniles and kids, again, not men and women, kids are going through, you know, wouldn't be wished upon anybody. And, you know, we just have to support the police department and what they're doing. And I know that the men and women that go there have that compassion at the same time as trying to enforce the law. And, you know, that's a credit to your staff, Chief. But just again, you know, Counselor Mercier and I have worked in this field for a long time and, you know, Manager yourself as well. And it's just... It's just something that, you know, we have to deal with, you know, in the best way possible as a whole. Thank you.
Sure. Counselor Newn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, we just didn't just touch on something that I think we didn't address. I think it has to be addressed by the DCF coordinator or those in charge. Chief was talking about staffing at the group home. And sometimes, too, because DCF maybe cut costs or whatever the reason is, not enough staffing. Chief, have you addressed those issues with the people at the house?
I know it's been discussed with the GRIP home. I know we've discussed it with them. And it really came to a head for us was one of the homes that we had up here on Miramax Street that we responded to probably three years ago, maybe four. And when the officers showed up on the evening shift, which is a large contingent of officers that are on the street, that particular platoon, the place was a... Basically, there was probably like 30 kids inside the place fighting. And what they learned when the whole thing was done is that there was only like one person on staff. There's no way this person could ever control what was going on. So again, for the safety of the kids themselves, I mean, you know, we had to address that, and they did hire more staff after that. And that's what the key is. I mean, and the thing is, like I say, these kids have been through a lot, but you always find like it's the typical... You know, you find that one ringleader that kind of grabs four or five kids and decides to go out into the neighborhoods. And that's dangerous, too, because now they're vulnerable. They're out in a big city where who knows what could happen. So try to get them back and keep them in a safe environment is the goal. So that's what our officers try to do.
I think that's important, Madam Manager, is to making sure that those group homes, encourage them to hire, you know, to have sufficient staffing. It's for the kids' safeties as well as for less a call to the police department.
Sure. Madam Manager?
Thank you. I do know these are all, you know, important points. And as has been pointed out, these two happen to be DCF. They're not always, but these are DCF. And it wasn't DCF. It was another one of the state agencies. But when I was in the Senate, there was another home that was particularly problematic, primarily because the nonprofit agency that was running it was not properly staffing. And we did have a meeting with that, and that, I believe it was DMH for that one, about who they were contracting with. So if it's a sentiment that the nonprofit that's running the home isn't properly staffing, we can always try and talk to the agency and say, make sure they're properly staffing because they have requirements when they sign these contracts to run the homes.
Thank you. Counselor Rourke?
Thank you. Just one last comment. I know, Madam Manager, that DCF-run homes are supposed to have a certain amount of staff per resident. I guess you would say, Sir Mayor, something that your office could reach out just to make sure that these two facilities are up to standards with regards to staff and the people, the children that live in there.
Yeah, absolutely. Because sometimes if you're not getting the right answers from the home or the company running it, then we can go to the state agency because they ultimately have the responsibility.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, no. I think this is a discussion that I certainly wanted to have and get the information from the Chief. I'm not suggesting it's not easy and that it troubles kids. And I know Counselor Mercier and Rourke work with them. But if we don't... This is cyclical, and it's incumbent upon us to let the organization know, as you mentioned, Madam Manager, I remember that case, the nonprofit organization. You know, nonprofit, but they have a contract. And I don't want to say they don't care. They care, but the problem rests with the city and the neighborhood where the homes are. And every now and then, we have to send a wake-up call that what's taking place is affecting the people that live in these neighborhoods. So that's really my point as well.
Thank you. Motion G, Shannon Grant Information. Any questions on that? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
H, motion response restricting, redistricting expert. Counselor Newn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Christian O'Connor. The report is really encouraging that in the next few weeks, we're going to maybe hire the expert to help with the redistricting, which is a good thing. So I thank you for the report. Mr. O'Connor?
Any further discussion? Informational report. Informational school choose choice students. Madam Manager?
Yeah, this was a request made by Counselor Mercier, I believe, and CFO Connor Baldwin did get information from the school. Yeah, if Mr. Baldwin...
Thank you, Madam Manager. Just a quick informational update. There was some information about the 2020 budget, and a request was made about the number of students who choice out to other districts. And that number reported to us from the school department is 129 students. The expense to the city in FY '19 was just shy of $1 million.
Sure. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you. Which, three years ago, was... There's a difference of $93,000, so it seems to be going up every year. But thank you for the report. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott?
I'd like to refer this to the Finance Subcommittee. It's a good request. It's a good report. And could we also get maybe an opinion from the Law Department? How or what governing body, which... Who adopts this? Who accepts it? I mean, we get millions of dollars from the state, taxpayers in this city put in millions, and the school system. We look at all the applications that are on the council agenda tonight and in the past to do operation and maintenance. We've built 14 new schools, et cetera. Do we vote to allow this? I mean, why can't the kids that live in the city where the money comes into the city go to school in the city? Maybe there's some circumstances, but this is not special education kids. These are just people that live in this...
This isn't a special... These are out of district placement. These are students who choose to go to another district.
Okay. Can we find out how... You know, do we take that vote? Because this... We're talking about $1 million now, correct? That goes... That comes into the city and that goes out to other places? I don't understand it.
Okay.
Because I know there was an issue before with teachers wanting their kids to go to school here, which, okay, as long as it doesn't displace somebody else. But 129 students that live in the city and then they go elsewhere, we're going to pay for it? I'm not so sure that's a good idea.
Sure. Counselor... I mean, Mystic Baldwin?
Just to add a little bit of more information, I did have an opportunity to talk to my colleagues in the school department about this. There were... Lowell, for example, did take a vote years ago on the school committee side to allow kids to choice into Lowell at the high school. But it is my understanding from the business office that the school committee has since voted to stop that. And it is... It's my understanding from the school department that we pay half of the students' tuition to go to other districts. And it's in cases where the district to which they're going to, their current school that they would go to is underperforming. So that allows them the opportunity to choice into another district. But that's the information we have at this time.
We can get a report in terms of how that works.
It's an awful lot of money, and with the new ed funding bill, that could be significant when it's based on a...
Per pupil.
Per pupil calculation. So, Mr. Mayor, would the solicitor have anything more to add? I mean, I did make a motion to send this to Finance because I think it's something that we should really continue to look into.
I would second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes. So part of what the school committee had taken up in the last round of negotiations was the problem of having this sort of prior practice on the books and also looking at the finances that were connected to it. So what they tried to do is come to a resolution which recognized the people that were already using out of district and then all the people that were coming into our district and not just cut these types of programs altogether, but have more of a phased-out approach. Again, I can work with others and try to get a full report on it, but that was part of the goal there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we do get another report, please, could you put the figures in there of how many people in other communities choose to come to Lowell? Because I didn't get that figure either, but I think that would be interesting to see. And from what I'm understanding, if we have that opt-out program with different communities, they have a right to send their children to us. So I'd be curious to know how many did that? How many children do we have in our school system from outside of the area? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for Mr. Baldwin. I just want to make sure I understood this correct. I believe you said that if a student chooses out of the old public school system into another district, we pay half the cost of sending? And I just... If that is correct, I was wondering if we actually keep the other half in the way that sort of charter assessments are defrayed by the cost of reimbursement or if we just lose the full funding?
I don't think that's the case. Obviously, we'll research the matter more fully to provide the council with a more full report. But I believe the sending district pays half and then the receiving district pays the other half to make... Because when you look at the figure and divide by the number of students, it's approximately $7,500, which is approximately half the cost of the per pupil expense for Lowell. So the other component of the students' per pupil expense is being made up, I think, by the receiving district. But we'll confirm that with you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater.
Yeah.
The motion was sent us to the Finance Subcommittee, right?
Oh, yours, yeah.
And he's seconded it.
Yeah, it was seconded by Counselor Mercier. 4-3. Communication, city manager requests out-of-state travel for one DPW engineer. Motion to accept by Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Rourke. Roll call.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Newn?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could we, in going into the next vote, allow us to put, bundle it all together, 5.1 to 5.14? These are all the schools.
Sure. I guess... Yep. Votes from the city manager. Waive the full reading, second reading by title of motion, bundle and adopt items 5.1 to 5.4.
14.
14. Oh, by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Rourke. All right. You don't give me that. Okay. So vote to authorize Superintendent Schools to file statement of interest to the MSBA for the daily school. Vote 2 for the Green Elge Elementary. Vote 3 for the Lincoln Elementary. Vote 4 for the McCalliff Elementary. Vote 5 for the STEM Academy at the Rogers School. Vote 6 for the Pataca Memorial. Vote 7 for the Mc Avenue Elementary. Vote 8 for the Moody Elementary. Vote 9 for the Merklin Elementary. Vote 10 for the Shaughnessy Elementary. Vote 11 for the Butler School. Vote 12 for the Robinson Middle School. Vote 13 for the Wang Middle School. And vote 14 for the Butler Community Partnership. So I need a motion by Counselor Drinkwater, seconded by Counselor Conway. Roll call, please.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Newn?
Yes.
Counselor Rourke?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Legge?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
We did 5.16. Vote to accept and expend for financial assistance, 20 sustained traffic enforcement program, step grant. Permission to waive the full reading, second reading by title. City Council chambers vote authorizes the city manager on behalf of the City of Lowell to accept and expend a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Highway Safety Division regarding the federal fiscal year 2020 Sustained Traffic Enforcement Grant Program to enable police departments to schedule traffic enforcement overtime shifts at seven identified intersections, which traffic enforcement in these locations will maximize traffic safety improvement... locations will maximize traffic safety improvements by reducing the number of accidents occurring at the most dangerous intersections of Lowell.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Mercy. Roll call.
Counsel Mercy.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Samaras.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Conway.
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counsel Elliot.
Yes.
Mayor Leahy.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Before we get to number six, Counsel Chow.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules, if you don't mind, because I have a couple guest speakers here on my motion. Real quick, it's really straightforward and it should be really short.
Sure. Motion nine, seven, seconded by.
Second.
Counsel Noon, Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I'll read it. So 9.7. Counsel Chow requests city manager to investigate the intersection of Stedman and Westford Streets for possibility of safety improvement in signage or vehicular speed reduction. Seconded.
Is the registered speaker here, councilor? You want the registered speaker to speak or do you want to go first?
They can speak first.
Richard Hunt.
Robert Hunt, excuse me. My name is Robert Hunt, I live at 48 Florence Avenue. First of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councils, madam manager, and thank, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of this motion, which was a topic of last week's Friends of Tyler Park meeting. Highlands residents, over a dozen who attended, all agreed there should be an investigation into the resolving the traffic issues here. Backups at the intersection of Stedman and Westford Streets are daily, AM and PM, occurrences resulting in frustration and often dangerous aggressive driving. With the recent additions of the four-way stops at Westford and Foster and Princeton Boulevard and Foster, residents are interested in further study of the dangerous section at Stedman and Westford. The hope is that we can come up with some kind of a resolution. Ultimately, lights would be good, but maybe signage would be the first thing.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Chow.
For people home who are not familiar with the region, Stedman Street runs all the way from Chumsford from the beginning where the old Grand Round or the old Howard Johnson, now Moonstone, all the way to T intersection with Westford Street. And with the traffic backup on Wood Street because of the bridge during rush hour, a lot of Drumhill traffic would make a right turn on Westford Street to cut through, to go to Baldwin Street to get back on Metisack Street, so they use that as a, almost like a circle. And it's okay, you know, from the stretch from Western Street, half of the Stedman Street, so mixture of businesses and some residences. Coming from Stedman, if you were to make a right turn, that would be okay, not too long for wait, but to make a left turn, that would be very dangerous, you have to be very aggressive. You almost have to go in the middle road, wait for a small delay, small space, then make a, make a left turn. I think it's very, very dangerous for, for drivers in that intersection.
Thank you. Counsel Mercy, then counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This area of Stedman and Westford Street, we did discuss it. I don't know if you were, it was the last council, but we did discuss that. We know what you're talking about. We do feel the congestion and the large amount of traffic there, but we did have Natasha Vance over here because we thought if the street could be widened, when a person wants to, is on Westford Street and wants to take a left onto Stedman and, and they can't go and the traffic is just piled up all the way back, we thought it would be nice to add another lane so the person that's going left, the traffic can still flow. We thought it would be good, but she said the roadway wasn't wide enough to do that, so I, I don't know what the solution is except that, but it, it was, we know that it's congested. We know it's dangerous, yes. I don't know what we're going to do about it, but I don't want to give you false hope when we already discussed that, like the ending of last term, and really, there was not much we could do at that point.
Thank you. Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know Counsel Mercy is correct. I filed this motion and supported by counsel, the last counsel back in August, and the report came, came back. There's two prong. One is a bare minimum, kind of short-term address on this. I know that, talking about the three lane, that and the cost is rough, the, the cost roughly $15,000, right? And then you also talk about the long-term that it's going to put into the capital plan. So either, either or, not just going Westford, taking a left onto Stedman, but also coming down from Stedman, taking a right. It's illegal, but just there's no, there's no sign there, it's not proper way. So if this issue can be addressed, either be through traffic, stop and/or a sign for the time being, certainly, because it's, it's been going on for a long time, not just, you know, last week or week after, or, or week before. It's, it's been a problem because I know that, that gentleman who worked in the post office, you know, drop off mail, said, look, someone needs to take care of these things. Been going on for years, I just don't know what to, to do. So, and I think this is, this is a good, good motion and, and that if the madam manager through DPD, Diane Tratt, can address both the short-term and the long-term, certainly appreciated by the resident.
What's the sign going to say? I don't know what the sign's going to say. What is the sign going to say?
Madam Manager.
So we have the response that Natasha did in, in response to the motion previously. There were a couple of alternatives that she suggested. One of them was a 15, would cost $15,000, we're looking into that. The other one, which appears to be more effective, resetting the curb, installing sidewalk and then to have pavement markings, there's a whole list of things to do. That had to go into the capital plan, that was a $60,000 estimated cost, and so I think the point was that she was trying to look, that's probably the better route, it's a longer term one, but it's probably better. I did mention it to her today, so she was going to, you know, come back. We will quickly bring this back to the council as to what direction. She agrees completely that this is a problem. This intersection is totally a problem, so counsel, that's, but we, that would have to be designed, the better alternative is the more expensive alternative, and so it's a question of designing it and putting it into the capital plan, so. But we will update this to the council because I think this was in the fall that this response came.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought it, it is a good report and I'm not sure if it needs to be updated, but could we send it to the neighborhood group and Mr. Hunt because they can see what the recommendations are and they're good recommendations, some of them are costly, but it's getting, like many other intersections.
Send the report, we, we certainly could. If we can just get your contact information, we'll, we'll certainly give you that. And, and this was before Counsel Chow was on the, so, but good to bring it back up for.
So probably Tyler Park and the Highlands.
Right.
Neighborhood group.
Mr. Mayor, I forward that to Nancy, the report, forward that to Nancy Judge this afternoon, the report.
The old one too, though?
We're going to print you a copy while you're here.
The old report, I mean.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Six.
So Mr. Hunt, Mr. McGee will get, print the copy for you.
Ordinances from the city manager. Ordinance to create grant-funded position and salary entitled youth outreach specialist at the Health, HHS Department. Motion to refer to public hearing on February 25th, 2020 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Drinkwater, seconded by Counsel Noon. No subcommittee reports.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I just, if possible, and I think I've talked to my co-members of the, of the committee, but on 2/25, three weeks from today, I'd like to take Counsel Elliot's motion to the, of the process to change charter to allow residents to vote and elect a mayor to the joint, I believe, subcommittee of redistricting and rules, please.
Thank you.
2/25, I'm sorry, 2/25, February 25th at 5:30.
Thank you. Counsel Elliot.
I just want to let, I've scheduled a finance subcommittee meeting to go over, and my hope is to get a year-to-date report, madam auditor, for that meeting, that's next Tuesday, and there's also an economic development subcommittee, subcommittee meeting following that, excuse me, that regarding some motions that were sent to that subcommittee. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Petitions. National Grid request installation of 10-foot underground electric conduit to service 336 Central Street. Motion to refer to a public hearing on February 25th, 2020 at 7:00 PM by Counsel Elliot, seconded by Counsel Conway. City council motions, 9.1. Counsel Elliot requests city manager to have law department research the legality of placing a safe haven baby box at a Lowell fire station, seconded by Counsel Noon. Counsel Conway.
Motion speaks for itself, I'll have more to talk about it when the report comes back. I think it's, it's important to have a safe haven. It's a terrible thing, but I know many communities are doing it, so, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. 9.2, Counsel Conway requests city manager to meet with superintendent of Lowell Police to strategize with the state police with the goal of reinstating or increasing the frequency of the use of mass state police sobriety checkpoints. Impaired driving enforcement mobile unit, seconded by Counsel Elliot. Counsel Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we certainly talked about the downtown in numerous different ways and, and realizing there's some issues, and I think that when I, when I took a look at this, I said that when I've talked to a number of, of business owners, it's, I think a lot of individuals that come from the outside, coming into Lowell, causing some issues, and I think Counsel Chow just brought that up to have a breakdown of, of arrest problems outside the city and inside the city, I think, which I'm, I'm looking forward to. Also, I think if you take a look at this, and, and what I'm asking is the city manager and the, and the chief of police, you know, reach out to the state, and, and I realize that there are scheduled ones, but I'm wondering whether we can, whether we can add a couple of those a month. When I looked at some data, I found that there were some cities that actually had like four, four of them or five of them, some others had one or two, I think we were in the category of two. The data comes out that, what I have taken a look at is that when we have these checkpoints, it, it actually cuts down 17% of the alcohol-related crashes and other crashes anywhere from 12% to 15%. So it certainly does have some effect, and if we could take this and put it in, add it in with the, the public safety subcommittee meeting, because I, one other, one other point that a couple restaurant slash bar owners mentioned was the, sometimes the music that certain people, certain bars have attracts an element that tends to cause a lot more problems, so I, I'm not sure what we can do with that, but I think it's something that we should be discussing. So again, this is not the magic bullet, it's just a matter of something else that could help to cut down on the problems of, of downtown and making this a safer place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? One question, madam manager. So Counsel Conway, would this come back as a recommendation or, or action that the council would need to vote on or?
I think that what we need to do is find out what the setup is that, of that, of those units and the frequency of them, and what I'm asking is, is, is have the chief of police and the city manager see if there's a way that we can increase the frequency of these, of these units, because again, as you can see, they're effective. Well, if we can add another one or two a month, I think it could be extremely positive for the safety in the city.
Okay, so where this involves money though, would this come back for a vote?
I don't think it involves money. If I, it, through you to the.
These are typically run by the Massachusetts State Police.
Correct.
So it would have, wouldn't be our police budget, but the state police.
Right. It, we work in, in conjunction with the state police.
They, they notify us when they're setting up sobriety checkpoints.
Yeah, and if someone said, you know, when, when we set those up, let's not tell the, tell the world of where they're going to be and.
I think there's some requirement that they do put out a notice, but we'll get you the full report.
Yeah, okay.
I remember getting those notices.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Your counsel.
They know why they're telling.
So basically just asking the city manager to request the state police more checkpoints.
Yeah, more frequent and we'll have the chief.
Seems pretty simple, okay. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. 9.3, Counsel Drinkwater requests city manager to provide a report on the number of new housing units that were permitted for construction in 2019 and how many are planned to meet the standard of affordable housing as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, seconded by Counsel Mercy. Counsel Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I filed this motion really as a starting point for a conversation about what I believe is one of the biggest structural issues we face here in the city, and that's a shortage of housing supply that meets the standard of being affordable for our residents and the growth in population and jobs, which in a vacuum is a very good thing, but that's outpacing the growth in housing stock, creating a big supply and demand problem that drives up costs even further. Just to meet the projected growth that we're going to face over the next 10 years, we would need to produce over 300 new units of housing annually, according to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and that would be just to keep up with growth, to be clear, so it doesn't even begin to tackle the current shortage of affordable housing that we have today. And right now, close to half of Lowell residents are considered to be cost burdened, meaning that they spend more than 30% of their household income on housing, and 22% of Lowell residents actually spend more than half of their household income on housing. So if you think about what that means for a second, if every month that you worked, the first two weeks went only to keep a roof over your head, and then the final two weeks of the month were to pay for everything from food, utilities, healthcare, prescriptions, childcare, et cetera, the numbers just really don't add up for a lot of families, yet, it's a situation faced by about one in four residents in our city. So I can say with confidence that this, more than any other singular issue, is what I've really heard about in the neighborhoods, causing financial stress and strain on residents, and I'm grateful, Mr. Mayor, that you selected me to chair the, the subcommittee on housing, where we can look further into policy solutions on this issue, and I think this report will provide us with a good place to start in terms of, you know, where we are on producing the, the needed level of housing stock and particularly at levels that, that are affordable to residents here in the city. So not, you know, necessarily a motion to make policy, but one to just give us a snapshot of where we are and hopefully a starting point for, you know, larger conversation and hopefully a strategy moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Good first motion, good motion to look into. Counsel Elliot.
Yeah, no, I agree. Excuse me, I, this just, this asks about the FY19 or 2019 number of permits. I'm, I'm wondering if there's any objection from the maker of the motion, if, could we include the number of affordable housing units we have in the city and that we sustain? I know we have two developments that are forthcoming, at being done by Wind Development in the Hamilton Canal that have an, an affordable housing component to it, so I, I think that'd be helpful to have, helpful if, if the maker of the motion doesn't object, just when we, I don't think I'm on that subcommittee, but I, I think it'd be helpful as, you know, we move forward and.
The, the total number of affordable units in the city currently?
I think that'd be helpful.
Not new starts, but in general?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, I know we have Counsel Mercy and I sit on the community teamwork incorporated. I know there's a component of affordable housing there, and there's a housing authority and various, so I, I think it'd be helpful just to have the entire picture and, as well as what the future looks like.
Thank you. Counsel Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we talk about goals to, to combat homelessness, that's a very good motion, Counsel Drinkwater. There are a lot of people that are homeless because they can't afford to put a roof over their head. It's very, very sad and frustrating, and so it's, our land is of a minimum. We don't have all that land to be building. And then another thing as well is the fact that we're twenty-six miles from Boston. People can't afford to live in Boston, but they can't afford to live here because there's public transportation. They can get on a train and go and make the bigger bucks in Boston. But we're here, and they can afford a better rent that the people that live here can't afford. So it's a, it's quite a cycle that's very difficult to solve. But there are efforts being made out there. CTI just had something recently to mentor people to get off the street, to try to get them into housing through your efforts of that commission that you put together. So that is good. And having said that, here's an idea. We were talking about it at work today. We have so much to offer here in the city for different groups, different organizations, and we have different programs. And I know it's hard to get more programs, but there are communities around like Worcester, Springfield, Waltham. They have the same situation that we do. And they may have, wouldn't it be nice to get them all together for a summit to see if we can share ideas as to what worked in Waltham that we don't have here? We were just talking about that today, and I thought that might be a good idea. I'm gonna bring it up on the second Friday in the month with DA Marion Ryan. Maybe she could coordinate an effort, too, because we're talking about homelessness. We're talking about helping people to get off drugs. There's so many. Now, we're gonna have an opening next, as a matter of fact, Thursday, the Recovery Cafe. There's another gap that's gonna be filled. I mean, there's so many good things happening, and maybe another community has ideas that we could use, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Drinkwater, this is a good start, starting point, I guess, going with your motion. I know that housing and homelessness is a real issue in not just City of Lowell, in the state. And so affordability is key to it. I think the report of this is, the idea that Counselor Elliott spoke of is trying to get all the, you know, the organizations or all the investors or developers that are coming in and to get the TIF to build this housing, and some would be affordable. To get a number of that thus far is also important so that we can take a look as to going forward, what we need to do to make sure we address this affordable housings in our city, and as well as homelessness. I know that you have a task force, and then you have a homeless coordinator in the city. And I thank you for starting that, and it seemed like it going well. And I'm looking forward to the report, and I hope that report, when it come back, that gets sent to, as Counselor Drinkwater indicated, to the housing subcommittee to really get on it and see how we can do, what step we can take to address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Huge time manager. Madam Manager, in that report, can you put down the update of the old Franco-American school?
Yes, yeah.
That the CBA, I believe, is behind. I believe that's many different apartments, condos, whatnot, living units. And then maybe what they plan on charging, if there's a scale involved with the guys, the income and so forth. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll try and get that information. I don't believe it's open yet, but it's well underway, so we'll try and get that. And just, and we certainly, you know, get all the information that Counselor Drinkwater's looking for. I did want to tell the council that we were discussing this today. It will be the meeting, the first week of March, that we will have the homelessness coordinator come in and make a presentation to the council. Mary Shannon Thomas, who has been at work for the past several months, with an update of all that is happening and going on. So we plan to bring that in the first week of March to update the council on those efforts as well.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Nine point four, Counselor Drinkwater, request city manager provide a report on companies with the current tax increment financing agreements, including information on the amount of tax savings for the company, amount of revenue generated by the city, duration of the agreement, investment and job creation to date, and overall compliance with the terms of the TIF agreement, seconded by Counselor Elliott. Counselor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that tax increment financing agreements can be a useful tool for economic development, but one that, given the significant amount of economic benefits that TIF agreements confer to companies by way of tax relief, just one that should be closely monitored for accountability to the terms, the overall economic outcomes. And this report is really just meant to serve as a periodic update on those outcomes, which what I believe, I believe would be useful for this council and to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Nine point five, Counselor Noon, request city manager provide an update regarding installation of lighting at Clemente Field, seconded by Counselor Rock. Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, beginning of last year, I filed a motion concerning this, you know, the Roberto Clemente baseball kid and organizers express, you know, a concern or wanting to have lighting in the park, at the baseball park, and we have money since last, we gave last year sometime in March. So we found some money to do lighting. And so I just want to see that we get started on it. I want to see that the kid have light by the summer. So it's not too much to ask, you know. I know that, I know that there's money there. The last time, last year, it's money. It's just that as a matter of finding a contractor to do it. I don't know what takes so long, but we need to get this done this summer for this kid. So that's why I filed a motion.
Your, Counselor Elliott, first?
Yeah, no, I agree. There's a number earmarks, not only from FY twenty, but even this year, Madam Manager, that I know the money was transferred in for, I think it was about, it was one million for a number of projects from the state and including this year. So through you to, see if for the auditor, could we see when that money came in and where, if at all, it's been expended yet? I also know there's an effort being made to transfer earmarks this year. The delegation has been very good in getting money, specifically for parks, because it comes through into DCR, first and foremost. And secondly, I know the issue with Clemente Park. If I remember the discussion correctly, in order to put lights in, there are significant infrastructure improvements that have to be made, i.e. transmission lines and conduits, because the current, I don't know all the technology, but the current infrastructure wiring isn't sufficient to light the lights. It's still a good motion because I think some of that earmark was gonna be used for consulting and designer, and then we have to build the infrastructure before we can put the lights in. But considering the delegation has gotten significant funding from the state, it might be a good opportunity to do that.
We'll get the report. It was, it was significant. I'm not sure about the, but we'll follow up on the money part. I do know the cost was significant because the existing lighting is no good and has to be completely redone.
But considering it's state funds, then I think the motion is good, that they need lights. Everybody needs lights in order to prolong the, and it makes some sense from a safety perspective, too.
That's the problem. You need the lights, the poles, the infrastructure, everything over there.
Right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Last motion of the night, Counselor Noon, request city manager provide update regarding bridge repairs in the area of Sparks and Beaver Street. Counselor, seconded by Counselor Mercy, Counselor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, motion speak for itself, sir.
Thank you. Any announcements? All those in favor, say aye. Any announcements? Just one announcement that Counselor Mercy had mentioned. So tomorrow night at five, five-thirty, the ribbon cutting for the Recovery Cafe for the Lowell House. So anybody want to...
Twenty William Street.
Twenty William Street.
I think it's Thursday night. Is it Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
So it is. I had it for tomorrow night.
I think Thursday.
You'd be early.
Yeah.
But Mr. Mayor...
Elliott?
I just wanted to, to thank your staff person, the mayor's aide, for forwarding calendar items on this event, including these, in the next month, I think. I think that's very helpful, and we appreciate it, knowing what's upcoming.
Thank you. Everybody make note that my calendar's wrong, so don't go tomorrow night, go Thursday. Motion adjourned by Counselor Mercy, seconded by Counselor Drinkwater. Thank you.